At this time, we'd like to call to order the April 21st City Council Meeting here in the council chambers. I'd like to remind everyone that since the meetings are being videotaped, it is important that everyone speak directly into a microphone when speaking. We'll start with the roll call of alderpersons. Jenny?
Alderperson Whitaker?
Here.
Alderperson Schneider?
Here.
Alderperson Duco?
Here.
Alderperson Eris?
Here.
Alderperson Rando?
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson?
Here.
Alderperson Anthony?
Here.
Alderperson Ovian?
Here.
Alderperson Gentleman?
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Steele?
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderperson Elmore?
Here.
Alderperson Wagon?
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan?
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff?
Here.
Mayor, Eris, Ferguson, and Elmore are excused.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's now call department heads.
City Treasurer Beerman?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
Here.
Police Chief Iskan?
Here.
Fire Chief Mills?
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Library Lee Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner?
Here.
City Engineer Scott Sager?
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler?
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning Cliff Cross?
Here.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay?
Here.
Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor, Randy Smith and Bill Clay are excused, and Assistant Director of Wastewater Brett Breedman is here.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Okay, tonight we have no public hearing, and who's here for public participation? Paula? Don't forget, everyone has to state their name and their address, and we have three minutes per person. Okay.
Hello. My name is Paula Banager. I have lived in Belleville in every business I've opened, owned, created, and helped others to start within the city of Belleville. A nonprofit I helped fund, Rachel Harmony, is on me and Second Street. I tell you this so you know that I know what I'm talking about when it comes to the city of Belleville. I have been through four administrations, maybe five now, in the 44 years I have been here. To have only four different mayors in 44 years is really not a good thing, but my first venture into working with the city of Belleville, I was quite young but quite confident. I was told exact words, "Little girl, next time you come back, come back with a man." The truth. You, yes, we have come a long way from that, and no one has ever said that to me again. Moving on. Patty was the first female mayor in the history of Belleville. She set the stage. Jenny, the stage is now yours, and we are all here to support you and the city of Belleville that we love. Congratulations. We think it is only fitting and necessary to honor the incredible, I will speak in Boston speak, okay, that's where in front of me, make it fast. We think it is only fitting and necessary to honor the incredible legacy of Patty Gregory. We all need to give thanks to Patty for finally moving Belleville forward and in the right direction. We would like to have had another four years to continue the fast-paced forward progress, but the small but mighty Patty packed so much into the four years that we can only hope that Belleville will continue to move forward. Patty's accomplishments, not only in her four years in office, but throughout her life, have been epic and worthy of repeat. Let me just say that Patty had to slay some pretty tough dragons during her life and tenure in office. First, she had to beat a legend of sorts to win the seat, and second, the very first woman to hold the office. You go, girl. Life has not been made easy for her when that happened, but she had a vision and a dream to make Belleville a place to be, to live in, and to create businesses in. She was a gifted teacher to children with special needs and second graders for over 36 years. While working a full-time job, she founded and directed one of the most premier art shows in the country, becoming number one in the entire nation while teaching a full-time job. Who says you can't do both and do them well? Yes, who said? Art on the Square brought in over 39 millions of dollars in economic impact to the city of Belleville. Art on the Square needs to stay in Belleville as some attempted to move it out of Belleville. She has belonged to many organizations that help Belleville in too many ways to mention. Some were Work, Junior Service, Rachel Harmony, West End Promotion, and on and on. Day one in office, Patty went to work with some great people at the city. Patty always says it is teamwork that gets things done. One of her greatest accomplishments was to take the old Lynderwood campus, now known as Southwestern Illinois Justice, and work for its development campus. Wow. That had sat empty and neglected by the previous administration for over two and a half years and did not stop until it became one of the premier criminal campuses anywhere. She talked to SWIP, Police Academy, Illinois State Police, SIU Simmons Law School, SIU, and they are now all part of this great campus. We are now calling, just calling, the campus. Since June 22nd, over 6,360 officers and cadets have been trained. Instead of it costing the city, it now brings in close to $500,000 a year in revenue. Wow. Thank you, Patty.
Time's up. State your name and address, please.
Ann Coulson, 1244 Wayne Court in O'Fallon, and a Patty admirer. Additionally, the police union had not had a contract with the city for over three years. She worked with Chief Bill Clay and others to negotiate a contract which included a pay raise for the officers and a decrease in health insurance costs. Mayor Patty worked tirelessly to create a great working environment with the military and civilian leaders at Scott Air Force Base and the city. The number-one employer in the region had not had a robust working relationship with the city. She attended many meetings and created strong alliances with our military neighbors. Mayor Patty even became an honorary wing commander. Conscious of taxpayer funds, Mayor Patty stopped no-bid contracts. This had been a common practice of the previous administration. It was an expensive practice which only benefited a limited number of contractors. The public needs careful monitoring of taxpayer funds so it does not revert to the old way of doing business. Many of us will be watching. As you know, Belleville is the county seat. It is also the largest city south of Peoria. The city of Belleville was not utilizing or working well with the county. This has now been rectified. Mayor Patty said, "We must work together in order for the city of Belleville and the whole county to succeed." Two great projects have come out of this so far. One is the racetrack at the Belclaire Fairgrounds is being renovated, and there will be races again, and will bring in people and revenue. Ground was broken on the west end with a new animal rescue and control building. This all occurred due to cooperation between the city of Belleville and St. Clair County. In addition, the Villas at Hollybrook had a large expansion on the west end of Belleville. She also started the infill project where vacant properties were raised, and new construction is going in. New homes are being constructed in neighborhoods which have not seen new construction for, in some cases, over 50 years. Patty worked tirelessly to bring in new businesses. Over 235 applications have been filled by businesses finally wanting to come to Belleville. She helped, Paula helped to bring in one of them recently. Belleville is a city that people like to visit but did not want to live in or do business in. And when I moved to Belleville 20, when I moved home to Belleville 25 years ago, I wanted a new house, so I chose O'Fallon, but my heart is still in Belleville.
Thank you. Anymore?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Vice. I don't have a script, so bear with me here, but I think I don't have to go say a whole lot about all of Patty's wonderful accomplishments in the last four years. What I do want to say is, and I hope I can get all my sisters to go around with me with this, is I want to thank Jenny and Patty for breaking the glass. (Applause). So, anyway, Patty, enjoy your time. Patty has, I go back to college with Patty, and that's all I'm going to say about that, but we used to commute home together with a friend of ours, and so we've got some old ties. And when I heard she was running for mayor four years ago, I was so tired of no police contract, arrogance, you know, just all the shonism, all of it, racism. I called her up and volunteered, and she won, and I'm grateful. You've done an amazing thing. It doesn't start for you with being mayor. There would be no Art on the Square and millions of dollars spent here in Belleville every year without Patty Gregory. That was her idea. That was her brainchild. She and her husband spent 10 years traveling throughout the country to try to figure out the best way to bring something like that to Belleville, and she did it. Thank you, Patty. And now, I hope I'm, just, go to Florida, shop a whole bunch, Bob will care. Bring me some lobster, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Hi, I'm Kate Kendall, 105 West Washington, Freeburg, Illinois. To continue on, the Gregory administration inherited the loss of St. Elizabeth, which cost us 16 city blocks and 1,200 jobs. She and the team's solution and strategy was to continue to grow the city. The new economic strategic plan was developed in 2023. This is part of the comprehensive plan, which is scheduled for updating in 2025. Another big deal was getting the land in the 60,000-square-foot medical building sold to Southern Illinois Healthcare Foundation where St. Elizabeth used to be. It has been brought and will be bringing in many new jobs and opportunities. We will have 11 specialties with outpatient surgery and 24-hour urgent care. We felt it fitting to give a tribute to the tireless work for Patty, what she has done during her four years as mayor of the city of Belleville. She may not be mayor anymore, but she will not stop working to make Belleville a place to call home and a place where business flourishes. In April of 2023, the Southwestern Illinois Leadership Council awarded Belleville the Economic Development Award for Expansion and Retention. In September of 2024, the Leadership Council and Realtors Association cited Belleville as the next hotspot. Also, the projects that you planned started to implement or in the works. Extralet Circle Assisted Living Center is currently being constructed. City Market, Ali's, new retail center behind Lowe's, new buildings and renovations, taking place a Belleville Crossing, and a new dispensary on Route 15. I do believe the city of Belleville has been in good hands the last four years and look forward to our next female mayor to continue the growth. Thank you, Patty. And I've known Patty since high school.
Okay, please state your name and...
Also a fan of Patty Gregory and our incoming new mayor as well. Kevin Wallace, I've known Patty for 30 years. Congrats to both of you for breaking the barrier in Belleville. My comment tonight is a little different than most, other than just a congratulations. If anyone's familiar with the Maul Mansion at 321 West Sea, it's a historical, significant building that pertains to the very first coal mine owner, Mr. Maul. The property has three lots, lots 11, 12, and 13. Lot 13, all the taxes were paid on it by Ed Searon or Scott Searon in 2017. For over the course of three years, they were tax buyers. They took a deed in September of 2017. In March of 2018, the St. Clair County Trustees Department, which is Joe Meyer and Associates in Edwardsville, listed in the auction two lots with obvious obstruction of half of a house. The first parcel should have never been deeded to Mr. Searon prior to the other two parcels because the house sits on three parcels. I attended the auction. Searon was going to attend the auction, and he agreed that he would be willing to split the parcels. He still had a deed at that time, and he said, you know, "You bid if you show up, or I'll bid if I show up, and one way or another, we'll work something out." I showed up in March of 2018. Mr. Searon did not. I purchased two lots with obvious obstruction of half of the house. I wanted the eastern portion, and he wanted the western portion. There's a block, white block building that used to be Weizenbox Transmission Shop on that property that sits on the back two-thirds, lots number 11 and 12. I bought those two parcels. When I had the, when I took the deed through Joe Meyer and Associates, I had it deeded as KPKD 2005 LLC, series number 11/12 East, with the intentions of only keeping the eastern portion because the house had nothing to do with me. The house belonged to Mr. Searon. I took the deed. Later on, I approached Searon. He didn't know what he was going to do, and later on, Whitney Stroemeyer from Joe Meyer and Associates called me and said that he called a sale on error and turned the deed back after I bought my two parcels. And I was told that the house would have to remain in some kind of trust for four to five years or longer because of the rule that had not been changed. It couldn't go back on the auction block for a number of years. So, I've cut the grass on the left, the west side of the property and on the front. I spoke to Scott Searon last year. I helped clear some brush in order so the police could see the entrance to the house because the vagrants were going in the house. I posted no trespassing signs so the police could do something about it, and now a decision has been made to demo the house. But they're also wanting to demo my block building, which I have invested $27,000 in brand new roof. I have some broken-out windows from kids going up and down the alley. There's a bunch of large rocks, and they pick up the rocks. I have receipts for over $300 in glass that I replaced last year, and I have plans to enclose the windows with some gated barn doors. I don't want to lose my building, and there's a decision that you're making tonight in regards to buying Lot 13, and I would like to work with the city and the Trustees Department. I met with them in June, July, and August of last year. They told me I had the first right of decision to work something out, so...
Thank you so much, Kevin, and we'll see how it goes tonight, and...
Well, there's a motion of 11-E1 to purchase Lot 13 in lieu of demolition, and I own half the property that has broken glass. It has a $27,000 new roof fund, and I'd like to retain my building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. First, I would like to recognize Sarah Beerman, our new treasurer, well, our old and new treasurer. So, congratulations, Sarah. Thank you so much. And then, we'll start with Ms. Schaefer. Shelly, we want to congratulate you. First of all, let's give her a big round of applause.[1121.15][1121.15](Applause). Shelly has been here for eight years as an alderman, and so we wanted to present to her, Michelle Shelly Schaefer, a grateful appreciation for eight years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as alderperson for Ward 5 in 2017 to 2025. Thank you so much. I have a little gift for you, but I'll have Eric give it to you tomorrow, okay?
Thank you. I look forward to continuing more with the city coming up. It's going to be a new season for me, so I can't wait to get started.
Well, we wish you all the luck, and we know you're going to do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1168.41][1168.41](Applause). And, well, let's have a round of applause for our new mayor.[1176.08][1176.08](Applause). Jenny's been with the city many, many years, but she's also been here eight years as the city of Belleville while serving as city clerk. So, we want to congratulate you. You're going to do a great job, Jenny. And we're glad we're at that glass ceiling.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so, this is presented to Jenny Kane Meyer, a grateful appreciation for eight years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as city clerk, 2017 to 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you.
And I know it will be...
And I want to thank you for being the first female mayor, and honestly, yes, nobody can take away Hardest Square. You were the reason Hardest Square and the city owe you a lot for that.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that.[1240.23][1240.23](Applause).
Good evening, everybody. This is, this here is some kind of situation here. This lady, Patty Gregory, the first female mayor in the city of Belleville. She has accomplished so many things. She asked me, "Oh, you need to try to do some things, sure." I said, "Patty, just run on what you have accomplished. All the things that you have done in four short years has been fantastic. It's been an honor for me to serve with you, you know, to see this. This is very historic. You're the first female mayor, and myself, the first African-American, all of us in the city of Belleville. And I took all the time, and we have made history for this city, something that will be written in the history books for the kids to look at and learn forever. And, Patty, it's, it's, it's an honor for them to, for you all to contribute and to call and say, "We want you to present this to Patty." It's, I don't know, you know, it's been good. It's been a good ride. So, we're going to present this to you today, present to Patty Gregory, grateful appreciation. Four years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville while serving as mayor from 2021 to 2025. Thank you.[1262.23][1262.23](Applause).
Well, I just, you know, I'm not a woman of misorder.[1264.23][1264.23](Laughter). But, anyway, I do want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to serve in the city that I love. I will be 72. Don't put that in the paper, Terry.[1269.23][1269.23](Laughter). But I will tell you that the past 24 years of my life, I've done a lot of volunteer service all over for over 40 years. But I have to say, the last 24 years of my life has been devoted totally to the city of Belleville. When we started Art on the Square, it was a thought in my mind, and I knew that Belleville was, had the perfect setting for it, and so I was grateful that we had wonderful people working on the committee, all volunteers that came on, and we worked very, very well together. I think Mary can attest to that. Several people here, we never even had an argument in Art on the Square in all these years. But within five years, that was our goal from the first meeting, within five years, we were going to be number one in the nation, and we were several times. And that's because of people like all of you that supported it all those years, and also people in the audience, and people from the community, and people from outside the community. So, I'm proud to say it is still going on. It's in the city of Belleville, and hopefully, it will be here for many more years to come. And then, I want to thank you for electing me as the first female mayor of Belleville. It's been a...[1290.23][1290.23](Applause). And I will tell you, because the first, first person that called me, I'm not going to say who it is, but anyways, nobody's sitting in this room, I'll tell you that, called me and said, "What have you ever done for Belleville? You can't be a mayor."[1295.23][1295.23](Laughter). I'm not going to tell you what sex it was.[1297.23][1297.23](Laughter). Don't put that on paper.[1299.23][1299.23](Laughter). But, anyway, so, but proved them wrong, and now we have our second female mayor, and a lot of new aldermen, too, that are females. And so, I think we're on a roll, Jenny.
I'm so happy.
But I want to thank all of you again for being so nice and so gracious, and I would think of you often. Thank you so much.[1307.23][1307.23](Applause). Okay, we better move on. Okay, so, approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve City Council Meeting and Executive Sessions, minutes of April 7th of 2025.
Schneider.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under Claims, Payroll, and Disbursements, a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of $4,583,299.03 and payroll in the amount of $1,020,996.10.
Whitaker, so moved.
Thank you.
Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Rando?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And now, motion from Police and Fire. Johnny?
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve a contract with Regis in the amount of $4,344,056.03 per year to access to Missouri Agency data information with an annual 6% increase. So moved.
Wagon, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
Duco?
Aye.
Rando?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Rando?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And now, a motion to approve the treasurer's report from February of 2025.
Schneider.
And do the statement of cash.
Oh, and the statement of cash and investments.
Steele?
Rothweiler.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call?
You can do it.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Motion from Finance, Mr. Whitaker.
Any objection to reading them as a group?
No.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, 11A1, a motion to close Fund 30, the Special Service Area, and corresponding checking account upon payment of all final expenses. 11A2, a motion to approve the fiscal year '25 budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director. And 11A3, a motion to approve the fiscal year '25, '26 budget. So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? I mean, roll call?
Schneider?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Rando?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
I'm not gonna tell you what sex it was. Don't put that on paper. But anyway, so, but proved them wrong. And now we have our second female mayor and a lot of new aldermen too that are females. And so I think we're on a roll, Jenny. But I would thank all of you again for being so nice and so gracious. And I would think of you often. Thank you so much.
Okay, we better move on. Okay. So approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve city council meeting and executive sessions minutes of April seventh of twenty twenty-five.
Schneider.
Schaefer, second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under claims, payroll and disbursements, a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of four million, five hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and three cents and payroll in the amount of one million, twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Whitaker, so moved.
Thank you.
Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you very much. And now a motion to approve the treasurer's report from February of twenty twenty-five.
Schneider.
And do the statement of cash.
Oh, and the statement of cash and investments. Steele?
Rothweiler.
Thank you so much. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now oral reports from standing committees, special committees and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. Motion from finance, Mr. Whitaker.
Any objection to reading them as a group?
No.
On behalf of the finance committee, eleven A one, a motion to close Fund Thirty, the special service area and corresponding checking account upon payment of all final expenses. Eleven A two, a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments as recommended by the finance director. And eleven A three, a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? I mean, roll call. Schneider?
Yes.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much. And now motion from police and fire. Johnny?
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to approve a contract with Regis in the amount of four thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents per year to access to Missouri Agency data information with an annual s- six percent increase. So moved.
Wygon, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much. And now motions from fire and police commission. Johnny?
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to, um, make this motion on behalf of the police and fire commissioners. Motion to approve the hiring of Haley Poole, Brandon Jackson, Vincent Hernandez as probationary police officers effective Wednesday, May fourteenth, two, twenty twenty-five at twelve oh one AM. So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Eleven C two, motion to approve the promotion of firefighter Nick Lombardo to engineer effective April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at twelve oh one.
Steele, second.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you. Nick Lombardo, would you come forward and be recognized with, with, uh, I can't see. I don't have my contacts in. Stephanie Chee Mills.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I want to congratulate you, Nick, on your appointment, your appointment and promotion and everything. So we certainly appreciate you all doing a fine job. Let's have a big round of applause.
Okay, we will now move on to motions from the parks board. Uh, Mr. Dillman?
Uh, will there be any problems with me reading it together?
No.
Eleven D, motion from the parks board. Motion to approve hands excavating and landscaping incorporated in the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for Lattimer Park improvements, TIP three. Eleven D two, motion to approve Gonzalez Companies LLC for Lattimer Park construction management services in the amount of sixteen thousand, TIP three. Eleven D three, motion to approve facility using agreement with Phoenix Elite Football for non-exclusive use of Lattimer Park soccer field effective May first, twenty twenty-five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of five hundred dollars. Eleven D four, motion to approve the bicycle and pedestrian master su- master plan for Oats Associates.
Rothweiler, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Uh, roll call, Jenny? Ovian? Ovian?
I'm so good. Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much. And now motions from administration. Jenny? Do you want me to read them together or separate?
Together, Sydney.
Yep.
Can we separate E one, please?
Yep. Eleven E one, motion to purchase three twenty-one West C Street parcel zero eight two one zero four one six zero one three from St. Clair County trustee in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for demolition.
Randall, so moved.
Okay, any discussion?
Steele, second.
Oh, second, sorry. Brian, second. Steele?
We got it.
I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, I guess my question's for the city attorney. Is there anything we need to do differently if the city would wish to, to work with the, the owner of the other part of this property other than slating it for demolition in the, in the amounts here? Do we need to word this differently?
This is simply the property acquisition, so depending on what the timing of the contemplated demolition is, uh, you could either table it, have that discussion, you could approve it with contingencies and have that discussion with them, but either way, that discussion would occur prior to a demolition, so, you know, it, acquiring a property now doesn't necessarily forego the opportunity in the future to do something other than demolition.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to suggest to table it till we learn more about the property since we had a public participation speaker.
I, I just want some clarity, though. If we go ahead and do this, though, we're acquiring that property, it doesn't mean we're gonna demolish. We can meet with this person after, correct?
So we, I bring Scott Tyler up.
Okay.
Cause we do have the court order for demolition. Um, I believe March twenty-eighth, that order was entered.
Uh, I brought some pictures of the property. This property has been an issue with us since I started, Scott. It's at three twenty-one, that's West C, next to Hough Park. Neighbors call a lot consistently. That's a picture of us.
Take, take the microphone with you if you're gonna walk around.
So, so this property is, is very neat. It's three parcels. It's split a house in thirds. The first parcel from C Street is thirty-six feet deep into this house. The next two parcels are twenty-five feet and twenty-five feet owned by Mr. Wallace. The third parcel has the garage on East Peak side. Um, and if you see the first picture, there's a garage. The door was open when I went by there. We've had constant problems with people getting into this property. Uh, the neighbors are extremely happy that finally something may be happening with it because it's been an issue with them since my first day. Uh, we've had, we boarded it up. It's gotten broken into. The windows are consistently broken out of it. Uh, the garage, Mr. Wallace speaks about it. The doors open, but you can't get anywhere through there. I took a picture because we can't get in there. It's so filled with junk. I mean, it's, it's basically a lot of storage of, I'm not, there's a couple cars in there under tards, but there, even those things is covered up. It's, it's four foot through, this whole garage. You can see the, the actual house is in the chloral condition. Uh, the ceiling is down on the first, second floor in many areas. Uh, the walls are separating from the floors around the outside of the second floor in several areas. Uh, we, we talked about it at the building administration, some other people. The, the low estimate to get this house back into a level condition is about at least three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it's a big house and it's got a lot of big equipment and, uh, the appliances are there, furnaces, air conditioning, all that's gone. Plumbing, I don't know about the plumbing, but the electrical has, it's gonna be all replaced. So this house has sat there for many, many years and the neighbors that live behind it, I mean, they have beautiful houses. They were out there mowing their grass when I was there and they said, I can't believe you guys were trying to even be able to get something done. So, I mean, we don't really see any other option here and I think you can see that based on the photo of this house is in very bad condition. So that's why we wanted to buy it. So we, we've got a court order for Mr. Wallace's two parcels. So we need to acquire the third parcel so we would have the whole of the whole property. So, I mean, do you have any questions? Yeah.
Uh, is that true then? Does, do the Cerons own the third parcel at this point in time? No.
Uh, St. Clair County has it for back taxes. That's how we acquired it.
Okay, so they're-
Ceron is not an offer.
Okay, so they're-
Nine dollars.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, so we would have all three lots?
Well, we would, we would have the first parcel. We have an order to demolish
That one.
the other two, which Mr. Wallace owns.
The, the demolish is part of that house?
Yeah, the whole house would come down.
Okay.
That's, that's where that would be. That's why we have a court order for the two parcels Mr. Wallace owns. So we acquire the third parcel, so we don't need a court order for that, but we don't, if that makes sense.
It does. It penetrates my house.
Yeah, right, Angela.
Yeah, I think it's very unsightly.
Oh, yeah. I should've brought a picture from the street. It's, it's-
I don't think there's a need to table it then.
Um, I'd like to withdraw my motion to table.
There was no second.
There was no second, so you didn't get a point.
Karen, do you have a question?
No, okay. Thank you.
That's right, I didn't even make the motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
In a second, there's a motion in a second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I got one question, Mayor.
Yes.
Is it gonna cost us to demolish this property? Can we go ahead?
I don't know.
Mr. Ty-
No, it does not.
Yeah.
The, we literally just got the court order, I think he said at the end of March.
Yeah.
Um, Scott?
Scott, do you have any estimate on demolishing?
I'm sorry?
Do you have an estimate on demolishing?
No, I mean, right now we're in the middle of fifteen. We're demolishing and, and we have s- our sights on some. And we kind of ha- kind of have to, uh, triage those because we won't have enough money to tear down the ones that we need to tear down. So I don't really have a date. We're gonna have the, uh, uh, utilities shut off at the property. And we're gonna have an asbestos study done, so if we would, that would be on our next round, which is very likely. It would probably be summertime.
But we don't have an estimate. We never write. We don't have an estimate on the cost.
Oh, the cost? I'm sorry, I thought it was-
The cost of demolition.
We have an idea of the cost.
I mean, I, I could ballpark it, but I mean, I, you know, it's gonna be a total guess.
Okay.
That's good. Just a ballpark.
Uh, fifty thousand. It's a big house.
Okay. Any more discussion? Right now we have a motion on the floor. This is a request to purchase three twenty-one West C Street parcel zero eight dash twenty-one dash zero four one six dash zero one three from St. Clair County trustee in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for demolition. Any more discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco? Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you very much. And now let's go on. Brian, to E two and E three.
Eleven.
Oh, Jenny?
Yep, I can read these two together or separate? Together? Eleven E two, motion to extend the special use permit for liquor license and outdoor dining in Garza K zero five, January twenty-two. G Level and Square, DBA The Heart Pub located at eleven twelve West Main Street, zero eight two one zero three three two zero zero three zero zero four until July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Eleven E three, motion to approve a contract with Power DMS Neo Gov Software in the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents for the entire apartment.
Okay. Schaefer, so moved.
Steele, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Uh, it says until July thirty-first of this year. Is there a specific reason why it's not any longer than July thirty-first?
Well, if you recall, this is, I believe, the fourth time or so that we've extended it. And that's what they're saying is that they need, that's the date that they're saying that they can have it completed by.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the ordinance that's coming out, it actually says the dates that we've extended it and then-
Do we know? Have they met all the inspections?
That, the cross-
What's that?
The inspections. Have they met all the inspection requirements?
Well, that's ongoing through the health and housing department as they move forward. But as Jenny had indicated, they had just requested this timeframe to complete the work. If you remember, they were not previously approved for a development agreement. So they had to pull a little extra money out of their pockets, which is to delay the process to, to complete it. So that's really where they are. They just felt like this is the timeframe they needed.
And they have not had any financial help from the city of Belleville.
Right. Now, I, I don't know if Scott can answer it, but, you know, they're going through the, the inspection process in terms of the electrical and the plumbing and the rough ends, whatever else they need to do at this point. But they're looking to get a full occupancy permit within this timeframe.
Any more discussion? Hearing none? Roll call. Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Movements from traffic and parking. Mr. Dillman?
Would it be okay if I could run these two together?
Yes.
On behalf of, uh, the traffic and parking committee, I'd like to make a motion. Eleven F one, motion to approve loading zone destination for Blankert's Rusty Gem on East Main Street, South Side from point of twenty foot to a point of forty foot from South High Street daily, seven AM to five PM. And eleven F two, motion to approve a handicap parking space at, uh, seven hundred St. Clair Avenue in the name of the applicant owner.
Schaefer?
Rothweiler, second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none? Let's call for a roll call. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Jenny, communications.
Together?
Yes.
Okay. Twelve A, Memorial Day Ceremony, five twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Request from Belleville, VFW Post seventeen thirty-nine to host Memorial Day Ceremony Monday, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, eleven AM to twelve PM, Walnut Hill Cemetery. Additional services, chairs, electric, flagpoles, tents and porta potties. Twelve B, Mepsi Pride Block Party, six fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Request from Mepsi and Shu Horn Green to host Pride Block Party Saturday, June twen- June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, six PM to eleven fifty-nine PM with food truck. Street closure, North Church Street from East Main to alley entrances and Patterson Square, ten AM to eleven fifty-nine PM. Additional services, no parking, picnic tables, electric and trash trailers. Twelve C, Big Finger Records Music and Art Festival, seven twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Request from VFR Music LLC and Avange LLC to host Big Finger Records Music and Art Festival Saturday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twelve PM to ten PM, street closure, West Main Street between Ninth and Tenth Streets and city-owned parking lot at Tenth and West Main. Additional services, no parking signage, trash trailers, picnic tables, open and closed streets and police personnel. Twelve D, Back to School Bash, eight nine, twenty twenty-five. Request from Sawdust and Glitter to host Back to School Bash Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty-five, nine AM to four PM. Southeast quadrant of Public Square, no additional city services. Fifteen E, Gingerbread Five K, twelve six, twenty twenty-five. Motion from Parks and Rec to host Gingerbread Run and Walk Five K Saturday, December sixth, twenty twenty-five, eight AM to ten thirty AM. And Kids Fun Run, eight AM to eight thirty AM, street closure request, West Main Street from Fourth to Sixth, Eastbound Lane, seven AM to ten thirty AM. Five K Route Rolling, street closure, eight thirty AM to ten thirty AM, additional services, barricades, public works and police personnel, electric, trash cans and banner across West Main prior to event. At twelve F, Belleville Indy Market, five thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Request from Belleville Indy Market Saturday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, five PM to nine PM to include a cl- include closure of West Main Street between Ninth and Tenth Street, eleven AM to eleven PM.
Schaefer, so moved.
Randall, second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded It's been moved and seconded to, oh, I lost my place, sorry. Moved and seconded for these, uh, Belleville Indy Market and all the new events that are coming to Belleville, and it's good to hear that. So we will be voting on these. Jenny? Voice vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I should've worn my contacts tonight, I'm having trouble. Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's, motion carries, and it's great to see all these new activities too that are also coming. We're well-known for all of our events in Belleville, and it's great that we have volunteers to help continue these projects on, because many cities don't have that. Okay. No petitions this evening? Okay. Oh, I have it down here, I wrote it down. Okay, need a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3541 and Resolution 3542.
Randall, so moved.
Okay. Jenny? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under ordinances, motion to read by title?
Again, can I read them together?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. 14A, Resolution 3541, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2024 and ending on the 30th day of April 2025, line item transfer. 14B, Resolution 3542, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2024 and ending on the 30th day of April 2025, supplemental amendments.
Randall, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, uh, and we will do a roll call vote. Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Now a motion to read by title only, ordinances 9374, 9375, 9376, 9377, 9378, and 9379.
Schaefer, so moved.
Randall, second.
Okay, thank you. Jenny? Oh, all in favor on the, on the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed. Jenny?
Yep. I can read them all together?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. 15A, ordinance 9374, 2025, zoning ordinance in regards to case 07, March 25, Kenneth B. and Elizabeth Wyland. 15B, ordinance 9375, 2025, and ordinance dissolving the Drake Road Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area, TIF 13. 15C, ordinance 9376, 2025, and ordinance establishing the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May, AD 2025, and ending on the 30th day of April, AD 2026. 15D, ordinance 9377, 2025, zoning ordinance in regards to case 05, January 22, G Level and Square, DBA The Heart Pub, extension until July 31st, 2025. 15E, ordinance 9378, 2025, and ordinance amending Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 76 Parking Schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois as amended by amending portions of sections thereof. 15F, ordinance 9379, 2025, and ordinance amending Article VII Traffic Code, Chapter 76 Parking Schedules of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville, Illinois as amended by amending portions of sections thereof.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion to approve the ordinances.
Randall, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we have no unfinished business, but I would like to thank all the department heads for all their help throughout the four, past four years, and let's give them a big round of applause. Under miscellaneous and new business, we need a motion for, to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of $58,906.79.
Rothweiler, so moved.
Schaefer, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Wygon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Ostov?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, there is no executive session this evening, and at this time, I'd like to thank all of you once again, and hallelujah. And congratulations to everyone from the new administration, including the new aldermen. Thank you so much, and let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Schaefer, so moved.
Second. Schneider?
Thank you. Motion carries. Oh, we didn't vote.
Aye.